Good evening, lady and gentlemen and colleagues. Welcome to the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners regularly scheduled work session for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. Mr. Burnham, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondek?
Present.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb?
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey?
Here.
Commissioner Cavender?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Chief?
The allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
Amen. As I indicated, this is our work session, so we're going through our work session agenda. The first thing that we are going to talk about is National Recovery Month. Director McCanns will lead us through a quick PowerPoint. Welcome back, Director.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioners. So I wanted to bring the township and each of you up to speed on what our response is in the township to those who are suffering a crisis during a substance abuse, substance use disorder event. And while we have in the past called them overdoses and we've had other names, I think that this is the correct name, the correct way to say it. People are having a problem with a substance and we are here to help. So let me tell you how that help manifests in Haverford Township. This is what I would call our blitz package. If somebody calls 911, the units respond to either the police, typically the closest unit, sector car, usually it'll be two cars will respond, sometimes more depending on the event. Every Haverford Police Unit is equipped with a medical bag. In that medical bag, there's two doses of Narcan, an AED, a stop the bleed kit, a bag valve mask, and carrying that kit is a trained officer. This has been going on for a long time. I think we're John, about eight years? And it's a great resource for us, particularly the administration of Narcan. We were the first township to have every officer trained, prepared, and equipped to do so. A few years into this program, it was recognized that quite a few people were getting Narcan but weren't waking up right away because they were so deep into a respiratory event. What happens with an opioid is people lose their desire or reflex to breathe, so it's a respiratory death. They essentially suffocate, they don't feel as though they're suffocating, it's a euphoric passing. So to reverse that, yes, Narcan has to get on board. However, the person also needs ventilations. And our officers very aggressively and very graciously stepped up and said, yes, you know what, we'd like to ventilate, we want to learn how to do this. We want to see, we see what you're doing, it looks like it works certainly, and it's been, it's been a great, it's a godsend at this call, but also at any cardiac arrest. They're very aggressive about doing so, and that is making a big difference, not just in the resuscitation, but the long-term survivability and the reduction of the person having a disability due to a neurological insult from not having enough oxygen. So they're also trained annually, but it's actually at the point now where they could be doing the training. They actually are so experienced at ventilating and administering Narcan and CPR, AEDs, all of it. So following right on their heels is the emergency medical services response. Typically, we are not there before the police because the police, there's more of them and they're in sectors. So they've already started care, we typically monitor their radios and we know what we have when we get there. And you will, the patient will receive a mobile intensive care unit staffed with at least an EMT and paramedics, sometimes two paramedics, and then care is advanced from there depending on the situation. And I'd like to put in too, though, that, I'd like to mention that this effort, well, obviously our goal is always to resuscitate somebody, resuscitate them, get them to care and see if we can't help them turn things around. It's been said, the one thing we can't fix is dead, so everything else we have a chance. So it's, we're not making a judgment, everybody is fully committed to trying to resuscitate somebody. Sometimes that doesn't work, but there's been at least two circumstances in the last year where somebody was resuscitated but was neurologically devastated. However, that person, the two of them, donated their organs. And because of that, typically a young, healthy person, multiple people survived due to the effort from this kind of a response. Our goal is always to resuscitate that person, but sometimes we get some satisfaction that at least we're able to bring this person back in time that parts of them could go on living. I skipped a couple of years here to give you an idea that this has been fairly steady for a while now. Now, when we say pandemic, everybody thinks COVID. People in fire EMS and police recall that we have an ongoing pandemic prior to COVID and is continuing through COVID and has been to some degree kind of out of the spotlight because of COVID, but it's remained steady. And we've seen a little bit of an influx lately too, a little bit of a rise. I'm not sure that's all due to, that's something, it's information we tend to get months down the road as police and other researchers figure out what is going on. But immediately post-COVID, you'll see that, I have total events, that's not just opioid overdoses, that's any, that includes alcohol overdoses, includes other medication overdoses. But you can see that the Narcan or naloxone deployment, if it's been administered likely by police and also fairly frequently, about a third of the time by paramedics. But you'll see that there was a little bit of a drop in 2020. And that little bit of a drop was largely due to availability. If you can remember how frightened we all were about gathering in groups and even going to like the 69th Street Terminal, which has been a hub for distribution of narcotics and other places, we, people weren't going near each other. So availability was a huge issue. However, we still did see overdoses such as alcohol and other medications people trying to compensate with. How about a quick review on Narcan? And it's an opioid antagonist. It's, I guess the layman's term, you could kind of say it's the antidote, and that works. But essentially what it does is it displaces the opioid from the central nervous system receiving cells and your body wants the Narcan way more than it wants the opioid that it's been exposed to than the narcotic. So now that's not psychologically or physically, it's just chemically it wants it more. So it displaces the narcotic. The narcotic is not shed, it's not neutralized, it's still in the body. But where it can actually cause an effect has been occupied by Narcan. Medics use a slightly different version called naloxone. Now Narcan is a brand name, it is naloxone, we go by one that's just called naloxone, and we have a slightly different way of giving it. We can give it IV, we can give smaller doses. And the reason for that, why we might want to give a smaller dose, is because there's some confusion here, is if we have a patient, say the cancer patient, who maybe got two fentanyl patches by accident, and now they're obtunded, they're, they need to be ventilated, we don't necessarily want to give a full reversal. Then the person has to go for quite a while without any pain relief. So we can titrate a much smaller dose and bring the person up a little bit slower, just to the point where they've restored their breathing capabilities and their gag reflex and things like that. So there's a little bit of a difference to it. However, we can do the same thing, we can take that medication and spray it up somebody's nose, we can give it IV, we can give it a number of ways. Also with naloxone, and this has been out for a while, it's no longer a prescription drug per se, everybody has a prescription for it, you can just go ask. Delaware County gives it away for free. If any of your constituents, anybody you know, anybody in the audience needs some, would like to have some at hand, is concerned that they have a family member, a neighbor, anybody, even somebody visits their house on occasion, if they're worried, just contact me, I'll be happy to give it to them, no questions asked. I go out to the county frequently and I pick it up, as a matter of fact, I have a number of kits here that I can certainly give out. I was around for the first opioid crisis that I've been a medic that long. And that was stopped by HIV because essentially it killed off anybody who was sharing needles. This new thing has shown up, trank. And trank is also known as xylazine, xylazine is actually the right name, and it's a, it's made for horses actually to sedate them. And this has been, it's now mixed with fentanyl, it increases the euphoric effect, it's cheaper than fentanyl, so if somebody mixes it with fentanyl, the person gets a longer, allegedly better high for a period of time, and the person who's distributing is making a greater profit. Philadelphia's fentanyl right now is about 90%, of its known to have xylazine in it. The issue with xylazine, besides it increases the likelihood of an overdose because of the compounding effects of the medication, is the necrotizing wounds it causes. Now, when I was preparing this talk, I considered putting up a picture of that, but it is so intense, if you wish to, go ahead and Google it. But I will tell you that it is akin to leprosy. That's the closest thing that I can actually, there's, it's the only reference I have. I've never seen anything like these wounds, never. And a number, it's almost everywhere. There are, a number of the medical schools are going out into the community now to try to clean the wounds at certain sites. Every emergency room has wound specialists that are trying to take care of these injuries. It's truly beyond a crisis at this point. Trank is also not reversed by Narcan. However, giving Narcan can remove those effects of the narcotic and can restore somebody's respirations to a degree. That person though, after they've received it, will have what we call almost a zombie effect. They're still heavily sedated, but they tend to be able to breathe and they don't have the respiratory suppression that is seen with the narcotic. So where's the bright side? Well, we do have Narcan, we can get ahead of this to some degree, but there's also help is available. And these are just some of the resources that I brought up. First, right off the bat, 911. I tell people, even if you're not sure, even if you don't know where to turn, don't be afraid, call 911, you get a call taker that will route you to the right person. So we have enough of them, it works. Call and they will get you to help. You can also go 988, which is a suicide and crisis hotline, call or text it, and they will absolutely steer you towards help. Delaware County has a crisis team, a mobile crisis team, it's on 24/7, it has trained recovery specialists, and it can be reached by that number that I've provided there, the 855-889-7827 number, and they will certainly respond as well. There are multiple treatment facilities on the Delaware County website under the Substance and Treatment heading. Also right here in Haverford Township, we have at least two facilities, right here in the township. You call, walk up to them if need be. Help is available, encourage anybody, anybody who has a worry to reach out to any of these resources. There's no problem out there that these groups have not already seen and dealt with, there's help available. Lastly, we do have an exceptional group that I need to mention. I know it's, everybody kind of, I love the smile as soon as you see this, you're like, there's, there's some heavy lifting people here, but this is really, I couldn't be more proud of this neighborhood to be part of Haverford Township when you see something like this homegrown group that stepped up and said, we have a crisis, let's do something about it. And did, and is doing something. The amount of support just for the families that have been shattered, the people who are in need, no judgment, they're just there to get the job done. And Peggy, boy, I'll tell you, where does she get the energy? But Peggy Muir is, and she's just one of the, there are many, many people doing an incredible amount of work. But that's our response. Back to the calling 911, I need you to know that there's actually laws in place. Nobody's there to arrest anybody, nobody's there to lock anybody up or throw them in cuffs, they're to help. And every one of our officers, every one of our medics, everybody's trained to say, okay, okay, this happened, we're gonna, we're gonna help you, and we're gonna get you through this, we're gonna do all we can for you. Nobody's there to, to kick down a door and, you know, break open a case or anything, it's nothing like that. They are truly there to help people, turn this around, get that person some assistance. I think every family either knows somebody or in some way has been affected by this. And that's just not Haverford Township. Yeah, every, I think I've been to probably every street in Haverford Township for some sort of related issue like this. Let's just, like so many other things, just put some light on it, let's just get it to the forefront and say, this is the thing, we all have this issue, let's fix it all together. So that's where we're at, that seems to be, I'm not alone in that philosophy, and I believe that we are making a difference. What's in the future? I think we need more recovery facilities, we need places for people to get better, safe places for people to get better. We'll continue doing what we can on the emergency response, you know, we can stop the dying, help those who are, who are sick and get them to further help. Thank you, appreciate you listening.
Next item on our agenda, actually, I should, I should indicate right now, there will be two additions to our agenda this evening. One is just notice to our colleagues that we will be considering a proclamation next week for the township to honor the 50th anniversary of the Haverford Hawks. And also, we will be adding a resolution authorizing the use of ARPA funds or the then subsequent purchase of a Ford F-550 chassis that comes with an ambulance package and that we need with some alacrity. So we will be adding that to Monday's agenda. Next on our agenda now, is any-
Mr. President, can I ask Jim McCanns a couple of questions as follow-up, if that's permitted?
Yeah, you certainly may.
Could you let us, do you have the information about how many overdoses or how often Narcan is used in Haverford Township?
Yes. I have it for first responders.
Okay.
There's really no way to track if a family member has used it.
Right.
Unless they've called 911.
Okay, and is that number increasing substantially?
Yes. As that one slide was shown, we're starting to see a rise now. I really don't know what it's due to, don't know if it's availability, I have no idea, but we have seen a rise recently. Recently, maybe the last 12 months.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, are you seeing any xylazine in your, the overdoses here?
Quite a bit, and we've had cases, yeah. It's, we've seen quite a few people who have not just been overdosed, they've been brought in for other reasons, or 911's been called for, maybe somebody, you know, laying down at a bus stop, somebody wants to check on them, and upon communication with them, and frequently police interaction with them, they've come up to see what's happening with the person, they see that there's a problem and they call the, they call the EMS system to come assist.
Okay.
And we're seeing quite a bit of it, quite a bit.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Thank you again, Jim. So the next item on our agenda is Commissioner Committee Updates. Do any Commissioners care to update our Board or the public on their committee activity? Hearing none, we will now call the chief up to let us know what happened in August? Chief Viall, nice to see you again.
Nothing happened in August, everybody was at the beach, so. Well, today was the first day of school, we had all of our officers and detectives plainclothes out every school area to make sure things flowed properly. We made some changes around Chatham Park School because of the construction, made a one-way street from 3:00, 8:00 to 9:00 in the morning, 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon to help the flow, which worked out very well, by the way. So we just got to get people accustomed to some of the things that are going on. But it was, it was really a good day for the start because usually, you know, parents coming back for the first time with, with new students, it can be a little bit of a bedlam, but it worked out well. So the monthly chief report for August 2024, we had 12 arrests, one juvenile arrest, 224 traffic citations, 13 non-traffic citations, 28 written warnings, 405 parking tickets. I think everybody's aware of the incident at Westchester Pike and Old Westchester Pike last month with the shooting, but I'll read that to put it in the record. So on 8/12/2024 at 15:26, at 2010 Westchester Pike, Haverford Police and medics responded for a report of a shooting. A female was treated for minor injuries, a child in the vehicle was not injured, a white Jeep was processed with 13 bullet holes in the hood, windshield and engine. Upper Darby Police were able to apprehend the suspect at Westchester Pike and State Roads. The investigation shows in a minor crash during a road rage incident when the suspect, Shawn Moses, opened fire with a handgun. He was charged with attempted homicide, aggravated assault, reckless endangerment, and other related offenses, and he's currently being held in, on bail in prison. We had a sex offense at Haverford College, a female student observed a male on the South Trail near Haddon Drive, he's described as a heavyset white male, 30 to 40 years of age, a full beard, mustache, zip-up jacket, and shorts, the investigation is ongoing. We had two vehicles entered and four catalytic converters taken, so that started up again for some reason. Lexington Avenue and Cathay Road, four vehicles entered and then for catalytic converters, 800 block of Clifford, 700 block of Cricket, 800 block, 700 block of Millbrook, and the 2900 block of Berkeley Avenue. These happened in the overnight hours, about 4 o'clock in the morning, a neighbor heard one of the vehicles chirping, like the alarm was going off, and soon they all happened around the same time. There is no video from any of the neighbors. We had three bicycle thefts, one with an arrest on the 8/31, and we had canine usage, one was on national night out, canine Axel winning to show their stuff to the large crowds. We had one male theft of Uniblock Taylor Lane, Victor found an article, male was over way on an axles and a check was removed, investigation is ongoing. So that is report for August.
Thank you, Chief. Do you have any questions for-
Quick question about the Haverford College incident, you said there's an investigation ongoing?
Yes.
Is, it's only happened one time, there was just the one-
It has happened in the past.
Okay.
It's not the first time it's happened up there. We've had Ludex. I don't know if there's any cameras up there, I'm not sure if there's any cameras on the trail. We have made arrests over the years, but sometimes things happen up there that shouldn't.
Okay, but you don't think it's the same person?
No.
It's not the same?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, that finishes our presentations for today. For next week's agenda, as I said, we will be, not on the agenda, but we will be proclaiming the accomplishments of the Haverford Hawks. We will also be considering and adopting our annual minimum municipal obligation. That is, Ms. Cuthbertson, is that a presentation you prefer to make next week to the public?
I can do that, that's, that's fine. It's an action we do every year, so I can summarize that again for everybody next, next week.
Yeah, why don't we do that? That would be great. And that minimum, that MMO will be published with our agenda this week. What did I miss? Also, for our consideration next week is one ordinance, that is ordinance number P12, second reading relating to traffic, that ought not be controversial. Also, a number of resolutions for us to consider next week, Resolution 2392/2024 relating to all sorts of official acts and authorizations for Haverford Township Day. Resolution number 2393, which is a resolution allowing us to designate some of our ARPA funds for the Cobb's Creek Interceptor. Resolution number 2394 of 2024 for traffic signal authorization at Lawrence Road, and it will be a mid-block crossing at Linwood Elementary School.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
Going to be similar to the one in front of the middle school, or?
The plan for that came from PennDOT, it's a vulnerable road user program, and they've submitted a plan to us. It's not quite as vast as the one in front of the middle school, it'll be closer probably to the one that will be coming at Chatham Park.
Okay.
All right, so that's not an actual, that's not a traffic light, it's just a cross-
Correct.
Crosswalk indicator.
We have to sign this authorization because we will own the signal, whether it's a crosswalk indicator, the beacons, the push button, which it is, it's the pedestrian activated push button with the rapid red reflecting beacons.
Thank you.
Right. Any other questions on that? We will also be considering an amended plan approval from a matter from a while ago, that would be the development of 5 Landilla Road. For our consideration as well, next week is a resolution approving the preliminary and the final land development for the Haverford Middle School addition. I am inviting Ken Matthews to come up and summarize that for us.
Sure. Good evening, everyone, Ken Matthews, Honors Rep for the school district. So we have a small project, we have a 2,500 square foot, basically rectangular, almost shoebox addition to put in the rear of the building in the existing courtyard, and then we have a little bit of the associated stormwater management with it, that's going to go in the practice field right behind the middle school, that's underground, doesn't, nobody will know it's there once it's put in. So it's pretty straightforward, the district just, they needed more space in the cafeteria to appropriately accommodate the students, the way they're operating, and there were three variances that were needed that were passed by the zoning board back in July. So just wanted to see if you had any questions about the project or the land development approval.
Did you say it's an expansion of the cafeteria?
Yes.
But is it, it's a separate building?
So we're actually, right now, there's outdoors that go outside to a plaza that's really not used. It was patio that was done back in 2010 or 11 when all the renovations were done. So it's basically now just taking that space, the windows will come out and it will become literally part of the cafeteria.
And is that space now McAdam, or is it?
It's, it's concrete, an outdoor concrete plaza, it's a walkway, so it's, there is a little bit of impervious added, which is one of the variances, but I want to say it was at least half of the impervious surface that's being added.
And there, there already is a stormwater system there to begin with, isn't there? Is this the second one, or they-
So this is, it'll be put, there is a large underground facility that was put in in 2009 and 12 through 12, so this is just a smaller kind of almost addition to it, but it's right next to it.
But it doesn't, does it flow into that, or is it?
They all go out the same way, but you know, the purpose is obviously to hold the water and then slowly let it, release it.
Thank you.
No problem.
Have all the required, because I think we ran into this issue last month with another different project, have all the required neighbors been notified of any required notices they're supposed to be getting?
Yes, that was all done, all the certified letters.
And the appropriate timelines and everything?
Correct.
Thank you.
Hearing no additional questions or comments, Mr. Matthews, thank you.
Thank you.
For your presentation, we will take that up next week.
Great, thank you.
Also, for our consideration next-
Just go back on 5 Land, no, not for you, Ken, 5 Landilla Road, I just, what are we approving?
So 5 Landilla is the old Atlantic School, and the developer did work over a course of years, but the work is slightly different than that which was approved on the original plans. Penone has been involved, I don't know if you want to describe in detail, some parking lot modifications and things that were slightly different from the originally approved plans.
It's, it's actually what we refer to as a revision to the recorded plans. Our ordinance allows a set of plans that have been recorded to be revised at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners only in lieu of going to the Delaware County Planning Commission and the, our own planning commission, when it's deemed a relatively minor revision to the recorded plans. We use that, that, we've used that maybe two or three times over the last couple, over the last 10 or 15 years. It's very rare that we've come to award. Technically, it comes with my township engineer's acceptance and the board's approval. And Dave's right, it really focused on, on two really, us very important issues. One was the number of parking spaces where he- One was the number of parking spaces was revised down, which certainly we cannot approve. And it actually required zoning variance. So they went to the zoning hearing board, got a variance to reduce the number of parking spaces. Keep in mind, the facility was in use for maybe five years when they came in with that request. The other one was ingress and egress and some modifications to it that were fine for vehicular traffic. Were concerned about emergency vehicles. And that was run through the emergency vehicle team, for lack of a better term. Like you ran a fire truck out there, made sure access was good. So it comes with those two signals. One from the zoning hearing board for parking, one from our emergency responders for emergency access. And that, thus, is why it comes in front of you guys because a parking number change isn't access change. There are field changes that don't always come in front of the board, but these past, these went past field changes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will take this up and consider it next week. Finally, there will be one more resolution next week, and that is a resolution for us to approve authorizing the use of ARPA funds for the purchase of the Ford F-550 chassis with the ambulance package. That will be for $61,000. Then within our contract awards, we will be considering the Cobb's Creek Interceptor consistent with the resolution, the Darby Creek Trail Extension Phase Two. The bid results will be included in our, in the final agenda. And Levy Associates will be lead-based paint testers. We will also be considering that and as well as electric vehicle charging stations at the police department. And of course, the contract for the Ford F-550 chassis with ambulance services.
Laura, can I ask a quick question? The ARPA for the Resolution 2397 along Jack McDonald Field, can we describe what's going on there?
Jack McDonald Field, sure.
So the, so the lights that were along that trail-
Existing lights on the wood poles?
Existing lights on the wood poles need to be replaced.
That's what I figured, just because they took them down when they paved.
Correct.
Got you. Thank you.
I have a question with regards to the lead-based, lead-based paint testers. Can you just describe what are we testing and where?
That's standard, I think it's annual contract that is through the home program. So that's when there are projects at folks' homes that they get the help for through our CDBG funding. There's a contractor that will do the testing at a set rate based on this contract.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to ask a follow-up question about the Brookline Park safety surfacing. I assume that's going to be going under the playground equipment that we were purchasing. I'm concerned that we've got large expenses for the resurfacing and the playground equipment and also, you know, a vision for what the Brookline Park could look like if grants come through. So just wanted to make sure, asking the follow-up question that once this playground equipment is installed, it's not going to have to be dug up again, will it?
We couldn't move that. We couldn't move either of the, so when they're installed, they'll be installed in their permanent location.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions on the contract awards? We also have purchases. The Public Works Department will be replacing two streetlight poles. Recreation Department will be doing the rubber safety resurfacing, or service for Brookline Park and replace the sight lighting along the trail at Jack McDonald Field. All that has just been discussed. Finally, the township will be considering entering into an agreement between Haverford Township